So everybody there. I don't have a quorum at this point. So. I'm gonna wait another couple of minutes. But I just want to give you all a heads up, I don't have a quorum. And most of those people. Are out of town, so. We're gonna have to continue it.
The point of information, Jerry?
Yes.
How do we? Move all the. Regular stuff, I mean, is that? Does it automatically go to our next regular meeting? Do we have to? We can't make a motion to to? Take each unit and send it to a date?
No, we automatically go to our next meeting. Well, yeah, but I'm gonna have to read the. Public hearing is gonna have to probably be re-advertized.
Probably should.
I can't even, I can't even open and continue it.
But the rest of the stuff is. All the other stuff isn't. Alright. Well, did we have an advertisement for the?
The ADU? That was the only public hearing. That was advertised.
What about the name change? Let me back up.
Not yet. Yep, go ahead.
Are we even, are we even allowed to be talking about this?
We don't have a quorum.
Yeah.
You will.
Huh?
Beth, Beth's on her way. Beth's on her way.
She's on her way?
Yeah, that's what she said.
We saved that night.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you call her?
Of course I did.
And she answered the phone?
No, somebody else did.
Jerry, if we had alternates, could we have proceeded?
Yes.
Okay.
With some of, not all of the stuff, though. Some of the plans that people would have to agree to the alternate. In theory, yes.
They have to have seen the documents.
Correct, so, so the A and, the A and R they couldn't have, but the rest of the documents that we haven't discussed, they could automatically be part of. I would believe.
Well.
What can I say to make you feel better, Jerry?
What?
What can I say to make you feel better?
I'll tell you at the end of this meeting. Because if it gets to a start like this, it's the finish line, it's a killer.
Well, and you have, you've got a public hearing on tonight anyways for a, for a bylaw and not really heavy attendance, so.
Yeah, but there's really. Well, I, I've got. I see Josh Justin's there because Josh is there for a name change, but Jeff. Jeff Cronin and Jim Nowak. Oh. Is either one sitting in for the ADU bylaw? No, Nowak is the subdivision.
There she is.
Did you, Karen, did you say Beth was in?
Yep.
Beth? Where is she?
She's still on mute, she's there.
Yeah, but if, I haven't got a pick, I haven't got a pick, oh, wait a minute, I see Beth, she's on the phone. Any way we can get to her to, tell her to unmute?
I just sent her a text.
Thank you.
It'd be so much better for Alfred.
I can't wait, Alfred. One of these is Billy Rogers, right? Oh, it's Billy?
Yes, I'm here, I'm here, Jerry.
Okay, great. Beth?
I've texted her twice.
I got it, well, she's on a phone, which is usually on a. So I got a feeling that she's probably not at home, because she'd be on a computer if she was home.
I'll try her again.
Yeah. And if she's on her phone. You're not gonna reach her.
Well, she should see the texts coming through.
Yeah, she should.
Hey, Beth, can you unmute your phone so we can know that you're there? Unmute her phone so we can hear.
Is that her phone, Karen? I wonder if she's someplace that she doesn't have the reception?
I'm here.
Okay, Beth.
Sorry, I apologize.
Alright, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, let's see, I've got four mi, just so you know, Beth, I've got four members. So we have a quorum, but it's basic. Any announcements, open session or public comment?
I would like to make one.
Okay.
I believe since the Board of Selectmen is starting this month. Meeting in the big room, it's time that we do too. I don't understand. Why we haven't started yet, but if they are, obviously there's a mechanism to do so. So I think we should take it up as a discussion at some point.
Alright. Alfred, how do you feel about, I know it's an announcement, which it's not on the agenda, because it's an announcement that they're, they're going public. Do you have any problem if, if I have Karen notify in writing the Board of Selectmen? Requesting that as of June first, we want to go to. Public meetings? Since they are.
I don't, I don't, Jerry, because we've been told. That it's gonna be February, March, April, I mean, we've always been told it's gonna, and it doesn't happen, so I think the fact that. If you actually go online to see when. Their next meeting is. Um, it's time that we have that discussion with them or somebody. I mean, I realize it's not on the agenda, but I think that. In order to carry out a meeting properly. We should be able to at least. Send them a letter.
Yeah, I'd like to put it, I'd like to put it in writing and have them. Get back to us. So, um, I'll, I'll take care of that matter.
Good idea.
Okay.
We're not considering hybrid, is that right? Some virtual.
I thought that we. Were still on announcements, I thought they were working on. Purchasing equipment to do a hybrid. Obviously, they've made a decision, either they have the equipment. Or they've made a decision, a decision to proceed without it, but. I think boards and committees. Should be notified by the Board of Selectmen as to what the heck is going on. If they're gonna meet publicly. Why haven't they notified us? So I'll ask the question. Alright, um. Public hearing as advertised on. A Board of Selectmen's. Accessory dwelling unit bylaw amendments. As advertised. Is there anyone here from the Board of Selectmen or from anyone else? Regarding. The changes to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw? Okay. This, these changes. Were basically. Arrived at because the building inspector. Had a problem. Where the definition appeared to be singular. And the bylaws seem, or the rest of the zoning articles seemed to be. Possibly plural. It was clarified that it was plural. The building inspector has acquiesced. To the fact that. He would. Recognize that. However. He felt that the bylaw should be upgraded. And it was tossed back to. The Board of Selectmen since they. Inserted the bylaw, came up with the bylaw. And they forwarded to us. Any planning board members, any discussions, since nobody else is here to discuss it?
Um, I've looked at it and. I would think it's a lot easier to just add one sentence that says. You can have more than one. This, it's just. This is, it could have, it could have stayed like it was, with just adding that if there was any ambiguity. And then. Adding commissioner instead of inspector was necessary as well. Or building inspector, building commissioner. That's, that's my two cents.
May I?
Alfred?
We need to do this because. The bylaw that Board of Selectmen wrote. Took me almost three months to get the building from it under. Um, I believe that. A lot of people wouldn't have. Put the time and energy in because. How it was written incorrectly and the fact that Victor took it for what it said in places. So I mean, I, I think that. We're doing housecleaning here. And I mean, I have no problem. Motioning that we. Agree with it, I mean, I don't know what they're looking for from us, Jerry.
Well, what they're, what they're looking for basically, you know, it's a petition. I don't want to get into semantics with the Board of Health, I've brought a select one, but it's. I consider any article that didn't come before the, from the planning board as a petitioned article. They don't, they, they think themselves as a planning board, which, which is fine, I'm not gonna get into splitting hairs. However. The, the planning board has been on record. Let's see. This was brought to my attention by. Affordable Housing. And by Victor. I threw it over to. Affordable Housing. Who basically was involved with writing the bylaw.
Excuse me, who is affordable housing?
Well, whoever. Elaine McElroy, that group. There was ten petitioners that submitted one thing and then the select board. Changed it, made a few changes, so it, it basically is an article that came from the Board of Select. The planning board is on record at the last town meeting. No recommendation. Basically because we had a problem with the number of units. As chair, when Victor brought this question up, I sent Victor. A copy of what I had read at town meeting. With no recommendation. Based on certain problems that the planning board had. And stated that we weren't against the zoning bylaw. However, we were intent, we were concerned with the way it was written. In the open-ended. Number of units. It passed almost unanimously on town meeting floor. When this problem arose. I told Victor to contact not only the planning board, but. The Board of Selectmen. Who originated the article that was passed on town meeting floor. And said, I don't think the planning board should be involved in it. Because it was a petitioned article and the planning board was against the number of units. Without any special permits or anything, so I, to answer your question, Alfred, what they're looking for is whether or not the planning board. Recommends, no recommenda, recommends, does not recommend. Or no recommendation whatsoever. I'm personally on the fence because I'm still against. Having an open end to the number of units on a piece of property. By right. So I, I just don't know to answer your question, Alfred. I mean, the planning board can, can do any one of those three. Recommendations to town meeting. But. Has planning board, have the other planning board members changed their minds? As to. Are you basically with this change now agreeing with it, or are you just simply? Like myself, saying I, I don't agree with it. I have no recommendation, it's up to you. I don't know, I, I, it's, it's. I'm still very uncomfortable with. The way the entire article is written.
Well, my concern is.
Yes.
Without fixing this. If we have another building inspector. And I hope I'm extremely wrong in that, the one we have now stays. We could be back to the same situation. As Victor took it. I'm not saying that it's right and I agree with it, but the question is, do we make it right in the book for the way? It was presented. Which we all disagreed with, excuse me, I certainly disagreed with. Or do we leave it alone because it's not even on this town meeting?
Well, I think. I think that. It's been advertised, so consequently. It. It is now. Even though it's at risk. It is notification. To anyone pulling a permit that this is the potential change to the bylaw, which is basically clarifying it. It will be on the warrant no matter what.
I got a suggestion.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we have. What did we do the last time?
No recommendation.
Nothing.
I make a motion, we haven't, we make no recommendation.
Any second?
I'll second that. My, my only hesitation is.
Wait a minute, is it seconded, seconded?
I'll second.
At least we can discuss it, okay?
Okay, so we'll discuss.
It's seconded, now it's open for discussion, go ahead, Beth.
So my only concern about making no recommendation. Is, is. Recommending against it. Uh, which is. That's where I'm on the fence. Certainly not in favor of recommending it. Because it's problematic.
Right?
And I don't think adding the sentence that it can be multiples. Without limits of any kind or without special permits or anything solves our problem. So.
Solves the zoning bylaw problem. Of clarity, but it doesn't solve.
Have the problem for the town.
Yes, okay, alright.
Which I'm more concerned about. The application is of more concern to me than the actual writing of the bylaw, but, you know, that's just me. I'm concerned that there are only four of us. Voting on this. Because it, it doesn't seem to have. The, uh, strength. Of the full board. Saying we don't recommend or we vote against. And yet we're out of time.
Or no recommendation.
Or no recommendation.
Let me see if I can, okay, it's been moved and seconded, we're still up for discussion, let me see if I can clarify that, clarify it for you. To the best of my knowledge. What I have been told. At the last select board meeting that I was. Asked to be at. They have placed. The contractors yard. Zoning bylaw by us. On the annual town meeting. That was a unanimous vote. However. They also stated. That all other zoning bylaws. Would not be taken up until the fall meeting. So. We could now, Beth, to your point. Because we've had a quorum, we've opened this meeting. We can continue. This public hearing. To. May 25th. Which we will probably have at least six or seven members at, a much more representative board. So we could certainly do that.
That would be better.
Okay.
In my mind.
So, the motion. Was no recommendation and was seconded. We will, I'll still keep this up if there's any other member for discussion, but we could. Vote that down. And continue it to the 25th, so there's a couple of options.
Through you, Jerry?
Yes.
We could also ask Beth to withdraw her second if I was, was to draw my motion. The reason, though, that I put it out there. Was the fact that. When they took away the AADU. Which gave you the option of up to three, three units. Without this, you couldn't, you're only allowed one unit, granted it's without the special, I don't want to get in the whole con. But that's why I was. Doing it the way I did tonight, but if, if. I have no problem with drawing my motion if Beth has no, and then I'll just go. Then at that point, I'll make a motion to. Go to May 20, whatever, Jerry.
Okay.
If the board would prefer that.
That makes sense to me.
Alright.
So I'll withdraw my second.
I've withdrawn my motion. And I'd like to make a new motion. So we're gonna continue this until May, the 25th, Jerry?
I think it's 25th, right, Karen?
The third Wednesday is the 18th.
Uh, the third Wednesday is the 18th.
Okay, so continue to the 18th.
I would like to make a motion that we can continue this until the 18th.
Okay. Any second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing done. Four members, anyone against? Seeing done. Move to continue. The public hearing on a full accessory dwelling units to. May 18th. Okay? Moving on. Uh, approval not required maritime industrial park. Joseph Way.
Yes, uh, this is John McKelwee with Coast Water Engineering. You had, we had presented the plan at your last meeting. And, uh, discussion came up concerning. The covenant, uh, for the road for Joseph Way. And also the question was arose on. The amount of Lot 2A, um, that is in compliance with. The flood zone regulation. And so we've added two notes to the plan. Uh, the area on Lot 2A outside of the flood zone. Is 23,715 square feet, which is 79%. Of the minimum area requirement. And then the third note is, uh, that Joseph Way is subject to a subdivision covenant. Recorded in D book 24, 27444, page 93. I believe this, uh. Satisfies most of the. Questions that you had.
Okay. Planning board members, any discussion?
I'd like to go.
Alfred?
I apologize, I didn't catch the engineer's first name.
Mine, I'm John McKelwee.
Okay, um. John, I have a question for you, a couple of them actually. Maybe you could help me. Um, under the covenant. That's how this road exists, is that not correct?
The, the road, yes, it's, it's, the road exists and it is. Under a covenant with, with the planning board.
Was, was told at the time of creation of those, of the lots.
That is correct.
Okay, well, I have a question for you now. Due to the fact that. You've done your due diligence and you put the flood plan on this. In Massachusetts, you're not allowed to fill in the flood plan, is that correct?
That, um, regulations change constantly. So, um. You're allowed to build in the flood plain.
Yeah, but you're not allowed to pave in the flood plain.
Paving the flood plain?
Yes.
I believe your bylaw says that you aren't supposed to pave in the flood plain.
Okay, so I, I have a problem, I don't know whether to. Ask for a cease and desist on this property totally. Or maybe you can help me because. Your flood plain map. Goes through the pavement and the cul-de-sac. In order to build this road. Which the planning board did approve. But was not aware. That it was in the flood plain. So now we have asphalt in the flood plain. The area to the, I guess my question is, I would like this re-surveyed. To show what has actually been filled in the flood plain. And since we're under covenant. I believe. The road is not finished. Or the subdivision. So my concern is. That the planning board. Allowed, made a mistake. And that that cul-de-sac. May not be legal because of the flood plain. Nor. The fill from the cul-de-sac approximately sixty feet towards. Um, the line at lot three and four, that whole part of the flood plain has been filled in. Are you aware of that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ben.
Uh, Albert, I got, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here if you don't mind, Albert, because look, first of all, the town has its own engineer that worked extensively on this project. To, to require compliance by. Um, Don Horton in his creation of the subdivision, Don Horton had an engineer, apparently, if you're right Alfred, I don't know whether you are or not, you know, if I ever look this up. They both. You know, laid out the requirements for the subdivision and the board approved it. So if the road itself violates flood zone requirements or flood plain requirements. You know, it's the owner's intention ultimately. Ideally, to not even have this be a subdivision, we're just putting the A and R plan right in now to get some plant protection and to create this two lot division, so the covenants aren't going anywhere. The existing construction isn't going anywhere, this has nothing to do with approval of an A and R plan. It has to do with ultimately approval of the subdivision. Road.
Yes, but, but the, the, the planning board was issued. Information that wasn't correct. The engineer on both sides may have made a mistake. But we both know that this. Road was never signed off on. If the road was signed off on, I wouldn't have asked the question Ben.
But what does it have to do with approval of an A and R plan Alfred?
Well, I just think the plan, plan doesn't show what's actually there Ben, because it doesn't show any topo lines. It doesn't show what it is, and my question is whether or not it violates conservation at this point.
It, it, like, let's assume that you, Alfred, let's assume that you're right, and usually you are, okay? Let's assume that this violates conservation, let's assume that it violates flood zone requirements, let's say it violates everything. That has nothing to do with endorsement of an A and R plan, it has to do with either your final approval. Of the subdivision road, in which case, if, you know, if the town comes back and says they're not gonna approve this road because. You know, it was built in accordance to how their engineer required it to be built and, you know. You know. Things will fly where they fly at that point. But for the purposes of this particular thing. As the board discussed in the last meeting, this is not, this is not changing the covenants, it doesn't, it doesn't. Change the responsibility of the owner ultimately to get a release of the covenant before any individual lot is sold. Um, it doesn't change anything on the ground. This is just, this is a paper reconfiguring of the interior lot lines. Turn it from three lots into two. So, you might be right, I'm not saying you're not Alfred, I'm just saying it's, that's a discussion to have. When the applicant comes back to seek a release of the covenant, or the town decides that it wants to, you know, move the subdivision. Completion ahead in some way, although I'm not sure how you do that, but. You know, that, that's a great discussion to have, but it's not nice discussion.
Well, I think it's a discussion the planning board needs to have because. We haven't finalized or been asked to finalize a thing, and now. So that work is not done, if it's done improperly or properly. That. We go to the next stage because. Your engineer, who's done a decent job. And has researched this farther than the rest of the people has. Um, is showing us that there's a huge conflict between the conservation, the flood plain, and where the planning board issued something.
I, Alfred, I don't know if you're right or wrong, I don't know, I mean, you're, you're, look, you may be right about that there's some violation of some state statute.
Well, Beth, look at, look at the map. Look at the map, where does the flood plain go through?
I, Alfred, I see where it goes through, but look, I, all I'm saying is, look, you may be right, I don't know, I can't tell you whether you are or you're not. We haven't gone back and looked to see whether the construction of this road violates. You know, either a state regulation or a local regulation on, on, on construction roads. But, you know, to bring it up, you know, months after the town engaged its own engineer, and, and I thought we were pretty close to getting approval here.
Well, I'll be honest with you. I mean, I, I took the information that was furnished to me. Through the plan, the new plan. And I went on a website. For the. FEMA. Because you're showing the FEMA line. And at that point. Um, it shows that. A large portion of this. Has been filled, and if you actually walk the property. It's more than what the website shows. And that's why I'm bringing it to you.
Alfred, you might be right, but. You may be right, but the applicant has constructed this road in accordance with, 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 with the approval that was issued by this planning board and required by this planning board.
That doesn't mean if you get half, halfway through a house Ben, and the building inspector made a mistake, they don't make you tear it down. We want that happening, well, please. So don't tell us it can't hap.
Okay.
You're right, but, but look, well, let me respond Jerry, look, you're right, but, but if you get halfway through your house and it isn't built according to the building code, that doesn't mean the planning board can come back and, and, and muck it with your subdivision plan. So.
No, but the, the building department would, and with the plan, with the building department for the road, aren't we? Doesn't the jur, the planning board have jurisdiction over the road?
You, you have jurisdiction over the road, and as of right now, this road, as far as I know, look, I ended you wrong, look, we didn't come in here to talk about the construction of the road, because that's not the relief we're asking for. But it, it, from what I can recall, this road has been built, not built correctly, and then restored and built. According to the requirements of, of the town's engineer. And, and numerous discussions with the planning board, so I don't think this road is out of compliance with the planning board's required. If there's a requirement in terms of a flood zone construction or something like that, it has to be altered in some way, it may have to be. But that's not what we're in front of this board for, we're not asking for a release of the covenant right now.
Alright, um. I see both points. Alfred. The. We'll come back, I'd like to come back to the same thing we had. At the last meeting. Joseph Way is in fact. Recorded as a road. At the registry. The approval not required plan is a division and protecting zoning. However. It, it appears. That with this division from three lots or re-division from three lots to two lots. The information on the plan. Brings. New information to the planning board as far as flood plain areas. That I think we as a planning board. Need to review and look at. Under our jurisdiction. Of approving the subdivision with the covenant. I do not feel that the issue, whether or not this is an approval not required plan. No new road is being created. It still doesn't go anywhere, I think. I think the approval not required plan is probably legal. However. As I said. With the information. The planning board now. Should have a further discussion. With. The applicant. Our engineer. And maybe in fact, once that conversation happens, may need to be referred over to conservation. I'm almost certain if this is in the flood plain. That our zoning bylaws says it's going to, it's going to have to be. We missed it, information was left out. This is now the third. And I think I'm counting correctly, this is now the third engineer. Involved in this project. So. I don't think Alfred, that we as a planning board lose any of our power. Controlling the subdivision. And the release of lots, which can't go anywhere until we do release it, because it's still under covenant. But I think there probably is more due diligence. That the planning board has to now carry on. As to. That road. How it was built, elevations, and whether conservation. Needs to weigh in. And whether or not. It needs to be. Reconstructed. In some manner. But I think they are. At least. In my opinion, they are in fact two different animals. The approval not required really has nothing to do with the, indirectly with the covenant. The covenant is taking priority. And that gives us. The power. Gives us the power to even, in fact, rescind the subdivision plan. If we deem necessary. Um, that's in our zoning bylaws. We can do that at any time. So I think by approving, the approval not required. With the notes on the file. And with the additional information that Coastal has provided. I think the planning board needs to get on our agenda. And readdress. The subdiv, the original subdivision. And not really let that interfere with. The simplicity of filing the approval not required plan.
Yeah, Jerry, do you mind if I just jump in with a couple of thoughts on that? Um, first of all, you know, from what I, from my discussions with our clients, I, I know that we're going to be coming back in front of the planning board for some further action regarding the property. You know, whether it's a rescission of the subdivision and it's entirely, and creating, you know, simply an A and R of land on Route Six. Um, whether it's a, a further division of this land, you know, that would meet the zoning bylaws, you know, by way of either reducing the number of lots, there's gonna be something to do with this. And finally, there's an outstanding covenant for construction of the subdivision road that has not been released. So, I don't think this. And I may be wrong about this, I don't think the planning board has the right to say, look, you haven't finished the road by a certain time, we're gonna rescind your subdivision. I, I think we can't convey outland, we're bound by that covenant. That being said, I think it's my client's interest. Working with John McAlwee at Coastal to come up with an ultimate plan of what they want to do with this land and come in, any connection with that. Request that the planning board either, one, rescind the subdivision in its entirety, or two. Um, you know, work engineer to engineer to finish out the road. In compliance with the original approval, and, and if necessary, in compliance with conservation or flood or whatever else comes down the road, we have to meet those. So I, I think I can certainly commit that we'll be back in front of the planning board as soon as we have an idea of what he wants to do. You know, it's just, you know, right now, we, we, we want the A and R plan, you know, approved for, for, for our own reasons, so. I, we can address, we can address Alfred's concerns and yours and everybody else's. Um, so.
Yeah, thank you Ben. You, Alfred, do you see that argument?
I do.
Okay, cause I mean, I, we haven't lost any.
I, I think, I think we should send it to town council. I really do Jerry, you, you, you're not, you're not positive, I'm certainly not positive, Ben's positive for his client, which I understand. We, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I don't think you are either Jerry, don't take that negatively. So I think the town council personally. In my opinion. Should tell us where we stand in this mess.
So Jerry, can I comment?
Absolutely. Beth?
I, I, I. I feel manipulated. And I hate the feeling of being manipulated. And I agree with Alfred that we should have all the facts. Not what people are telling us necessarily. But what's real. So to say you might be right, you might be wrong, is not good enough. We have to know that we're right. Or wrong. And, um. I don't think we should do anything till we have the facts, because I don't think we've been given. The facts in a straightforward way. That's how I, I feel manipulated.
Mr. Chairman.
Ben?
I'm a little, Beth, I'm a little offended at the term manipulated, you think you haven't given all the facts, Alfred raised his issues tonight. And, and by saying he may or may not be right, I'm just saying, I don't know.
I.
Any intuitions we're trying to.
But, but we approved something without all the information. That's being manipulated, in my mind.
Absolutely not, you approved something after your own engineer reviewed this whole thing with a, with a fine tooth comb. We didn't certainly didn't, and, and again, Rowan bought this property, okay? He bought this property from the developer. So I, I just, I'm just gonna sit here and say, if you want for words like manipulated, not to give all the facts, I'm gonna take offense to that, I'm gonna put it right back at you. Don't use those phrases lightly.
I see both sides of it, um. I think.
I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion.
Yes.
That we ask town council's opinion.
This is William Rogers, may I make a, a, a comment here please?
Billy.
I, I yield my, I yield my position to Bill.
Well, I, I, I don't like what I'm hearing here, I hear a lot of, uh, people talking about facts and facts that they're lying. Because I was engaged to supervise the construction of the road, not to check over the, all the information on the plan. And I find that quite, uh, uh, lackadaisical of any engineer to, uh, uh, to. Not have the proper information on the plan to put this plan aboard in this situation, also, I've heard, um, Mr. Zander say. The road was built in compliance with the regulations, that's an absolute lie. The, I have never, the road has never been completed, it has not been approved by me, and it is not in, in compliance with town regulations, period. Thank you.
Okay, so, I think.
I made a motion, did anybody second?
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, you were gonna make a motion, but you let Billy in.
No, I made a motion to send this to town council.
Okay. Is there a second?
For approval.
I'm sorry Beth?
So making a mo, so moving it to town council for, uh, a response. Means that we take no action, is that correct? Until we have a response?
I think we need to either disallow it, whether or not there's time to still continue. For Ben's client. But I think that, I can't vote for this. Until town council tells me. That what we're doing is legal.
So the question.
This is, this isn't in the gray area, I mean.
Okay, is this, wait, wait a minute. Alfred, you moved it, you moved, you moved to send it to town council.
Yes.
Was that seconded by anybody?
Well, I'm asking the question, sending it to town council means what in terms of our, our actions tonight?
Well, you wouldn't take an action if you're gonna send it to town council, because you're.
Then I'll second, then I second that.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, now we can discuss it, so if. If. The. If we send it to town council. There is no. Decision. At this point to either approve or disapprove. The. A and R plan. However. And this is a new one on me. What happens with approval not requires. Is that the basic premise is, is a new road being. Is a new road being. Built. For this approval not required, or is it existing? And that's the only thing we can really, and is there inadequate access? Then we can turn it down, if we send for an answer from town council. We're potentially running, I believe, into a situation from the day that the applicant has submitted the A and R. Twenty-one days after. It's automatically approved. So, in one sense, if we move forward to town council. The. Applicant has the right after twenty-one days, and I think we're pretty darned close to it. To go to the registry without signatures and, and record it. Now. That can happen. But to the planning boards. For planning board information. whatever happens on that side of the coin, and this is kind of what I was trying to, to put into put before the board, is regardless of whether or not we approve or disapprove, regardless of whether we approve the approval not required plan, we as a planning board still have all the power to do what we want, I'm sorry, with what town council and what is decided with this subdivision because it's under covenant. So if in fact we send it to town council, they record the plan after 21 days, the approval not required plan is on record. However, if town council comes back and says, no, you have the right to ask to send it over to conservation, you've got the right to to rescind, add additional information, whatever, we still have that ability. We have not lost anything. So I, I know we haven't heard from the applicant's counsel at this moment as to if we in fact send it to council, as to what they're going to do. And they don't really have to tell us what they're gonna do. But it, it, we don't lose anything. They may record this plan, they may not record this plan, they may say, okay, send it to town council, we'll wait to see what happens. However, we as a planning board are still in the driver's seat with this particular piece of property. We have lost nothing. Yes, they gain a little protection on zoning. That's all they gain. They don't gain the ability to sell. They don't get the, any ability to do anything else but to work with the Town of Walthley Planning Board to, to come to an agreeable resolution on our concerns at some point. Does that help planning board members?
Jerry?
Well, I, I, I made a motion.
Wait a minute. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. So I'll just got a question, I think, on the motion?
Not on the motion, so later.
Okay. So Alfred, you got a motion on the floor which has been seconded?
I call the question.
Okay. All those in favor on the planning board of sending it to council, there's four of us, is there anyone against sending it to council? Okay. So you have unanimous to send it to council?
Now through you, Jerry.
Yes.
Or through you. Does the applicant have the opportunity to ask for an extension?
Ben, you want to answer or you want me to jump in on it? Which, whatever you want.
We could request an extension. We're not requesting an extension.
Okay.
So at that point, if we voted down, then we leave it to town council. If you ask for an extension and town, and I'm wrong, which is fine with me. Town council said I would. At that point, you would have the luxury of continuing.
But, uh, Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, Ben.
You know, I'm, I'm looking at 4181P right now. And it says such endorsement shall not be withheld unless such plan shows a subdivision. So I think what your board has to do, if you want to take a vote to deny the plan, then you're going to have to make a finding of fact that what we're demonstrating and showing you is a new subdivision of the land. And, you know, and where this road is the road that was approved by this board, shown on a plan, recorded in the registry of deeds, subject to the covenant, obviously. You're gonna have to make a vote, a finding of fact that we're creating a new subdivision, a new, we're putting a new road in in, in order to, to, to fail to endorse this plan. So you don't just deny the plan. You have to make an affirmative finding that it's not-
I am aware, and I'm sure other members are aware of that.
Well, that wasn't-
However, what we have done in the past and with the new engineer with Coastal Engineering showing certainly more visual to the planning board the floodplain on the map. This curves are being thrown at me, so excuse me for having to think on my feet here. This division, this approval not required plan, Ben, if I'm looking at it correctly, and I'll address-
I'm listening, Jerry.
Engineer, is you got 113 feet of frontage on Route 6, and then you go down Joseph Way another 119 feet. You actually go further, but all you had to do was go into Joseph Way enough to create 135 feet of frontage.
Right.
However, a road all roads can dead end, they require cul-de-sacs. The cul-de-sac, part of the cul-de-sac is showing in the floodplain at the current elevation after it was filled. So we have turned down an approval not required plan based on inadequate access, I suppose, with the question. And I am not an engineer, not an attorney, but with the question, is this inadequate access? Does the planning board, do the planning board members feel comfortable in turning down the approval not required plan based on Joseph Way may in fact been constructed illegally without proper procedure consistently because it's because it was in the floodplain?
I'd like to address that, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Well, first of all, you know, as, as you know, because the board made the request last time, we did the calculation of the, of the, of the lot areas. And we demonstrate compliance with the zoning bylaw that says that no more than 60% of your lot could be in the floodplain. We meet the upper requirements.
Yes.
The legal cases that talk about access through compromised areas are pretty clear. They say, they say access can't be illusory, which means you can't have access for an A and R plan across a guardrail on a limited access highway. You can't have it with a lot you would have where the frontage, where the road is, you know, goes through a wetland or something like that, where you have to be able to actually physically get in there. Okay? Which you all know, you can physically get in there. This is, this is, this is a short stub of a road off Route 6. And again, if this planning board's gonna take the position that they approved the way and, and allowed us to record a plan, and now you're claiming that that road that's approved and shown on the registry of deeds, you're not gonna consider to be a road for A and R purposes. Then what else would be a road for A and R purpose? It may be that the road needs some reconstruction or, or approval, for example. But again, as, as, as I think somebody explained in the last hearing, this is on the other side from Route 6. Route 6 is actually preventing floodwaters from getting to this property. And as I think Alfred, I think it was you, Alfred, I could be wrong. I'm sorry if I, if I, if I did this to you. We can always go to FEMA and ask for them to redraw the front flood map because of the fact that Route 6 itself is an absolute bar of those floodwaters getting to this lot. So, you know, this is a, this is a technical issue. And, and this board is struggling to find reasons to not approve an A and R plan. And I, and frankly, I'm mystified as to why the board is trying so hard not to approve an A and R plan that drops the number of lots from three to two.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's that at all, Ben. I think, I think the board, I don't, can't speak for Audrey at the moment, but I, I can as chair, I don't think the board is, is having a major problem and, and probably is very happy with the fact it's going from three to two. What we are analyzing and I, I I will agree that we have differences of opinion as to the signing of an A and R on this plan that it, it's not we're not challenging going from three to two. We're challenging, I think what we're looking at is to say, wait a minute, we've made mistakes in the, we've made potential mistakes in the past because of inadequate information. More information has been brought to the attention of the planning board on this re-division of the property that has caused concern as to whether or not that Joseph Way should have ever gone forward in the first place and it should have gone to conservation before it was filled and built. Now, I, I see-
You might be right. Look, look, and again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to evade-
I understand your position. I do. It's an existing road. And that's why I'm trying to get the planning board members to look at this and say, okay, if you, if we proceed to sign approval not required, or let it go, don't turn it down because I'm, I'm not sure we would have sufficient legs to stand on to say it's inadequate. Because we haven't proven otherwise yet. But I believe we as a planning board, I strongly believe that we as a planning board have not lost a single point as to whether or not we can re-enter Joseph Way and get it corrected. I, I believe we can, but I believe it's two completely different items. I strongly do. So I think the motion on the table is, is moved and seconded and it's unanimous to send it over to town council. The question now to the planning board members is do you feel comfortable in turning it down because Joseph Way is inadequate? Or do we sign the plan or let it run out in 21 days? And still go to town council and go from there? That's the question I believe the four members of the planning board have got to look at at this time.
And, and Jerry, if it's any consolation to any member, we're gonna be, we're gonna be back in front of you to deal with, and, and Billy was right. Billy, you were right. It hasn't been signed off on ultimately. It hasn't been completed. The lot got sold, the land got sold, subject to that being completed. We do have to come back in front of you and, and get a sign off on the covenant, which may well require some modification of the road or whatever happens. We understand that.
I think the Joseph Way subdivision as three lots is going to be an ongoing discussion with planning board members, and we are going to solve that problem one way or the other. We've agreed to send it to council. We will proceed to do that. What we need to do is move forward at this point, planning board members, to say, okay, you've got an approval not required plan in front of you. Is or is not Joseph Way adequate access to get a driveway off of that 100 feet, which is already paved? It's outside, they can enter that lot outside the floodplain. And we address the subdivision at another moment in time and move the approval not required plan forward. What's the discussion with, because we've got to make, we've got to decide, planning board, how we address this approval not required plan?
Jerry? I, I had just a technical question, and that is the FEMA map that was used appears to be from 2014. And I think there's more current maps. And notwithstanding what Ben said about how Route 6 acts as a barrier or something, I know nothing about that. My feeling is that floodplanes have gotten larger. And if we need a more recent floodplain map, it's a technical question. Is that?
It's that, that at this point, okay, and I didn't mean to interrupt you. At this point, I, I gotta say, that is a question that the planning board should address only as a discussion with the subdivision. It really has nothing to do with whether or not this is an approval not required plan that should be signed by the planning board.
Well, what if the lot is covered, you know, upland is less than 60% or something with a new floodplain map?
You've already had the engineer put on, put on there the current floodplain.
It's 2014. I don't believe it's current.
It's not, it's current.
That's the current map.
Okay. I thought there was one from 21, but
I think all this-
That was my only question.
And I've got to go to-
Mr. Chairman.
That, because the engineer, and again, that's outside, the engineer is stamping it with his stamp on it that that's current information. So I can't, you know, none of us are engineers to conflict that. That's the lot areas seem to be fine. We've got to come back to whether or not we're gonna, we're gonna turn it down. And if you're gonna turn it down, you gotta base it on inadequate access. I can't see it. Or you just let it run out and don't sign it, and they record it, and we proceed to do what we have to do as a planning board with Joseph Way.
So Jerry?
Beth.
My, my feeling is I'd like to not approve it, let it go on without our approval, because if we approve it tonight, it will come back and slap us in the face the next time. If we don't approve it and we let it just progress, we are not culpable in terms of being responsible for it. So I, I don't want to sign it tonight. Approval.
Just let the 21 days-
Let it, let it run out. It's on them, not on us.
Okay. Any other planning board member on that?
I think I-
Alfred's not weighing in?
No, I'm going to.
Go ahead, Alfred. Yes, I can.
The reason I've always believed that it wasn't an adequate way is because it was never finished. That's where I, so I'm definitely opposed to letting it run out, but I would do that versus the rest. But I don't believe that the planning board at that point is actually doing its due diligence. So I think that if this does run out, we still need to have a discussion with town council to make sure that we don't get swallowed up in an A and R the way we have in this one.
I agree. But we already voted for that.
We, we are all, I think, all in unanimous agreement with that, Alfred.
No, I, I realize that, Jerry, but I, I believe that that road doesn't exist. I mean, you're telling me it exists, exists under covenant, exists under, you know, whatever thing you want. But as far as I can see, a road doesn't exist until it's signed off on. If the road was signed off on, I would have never even asked any of these questions. But the fact that the people who bought this twice have never finished anything, it keeps coming back in front of us.
Well, I think it will. I think that this question with the approval with an A and R on a road that's under covenant that hasn't been totally released is certainly a question for town council. But I think at this point, Ben, I think you, I think you, you've heard that basically the planning board's not gonna sign it, but they're not gonna turn it down, let the 21 days run.
Well, Jerry, let me ask you this question. Town council comes back and says that road doesn't exist. If they do, I'm not saying they're going to.
Right.
At that point, we have no recourse. Is that correct?
Jerry, can I weigh in on that for a bit? Look, we can't do anything with this land. It, you gotta remember, look, the land can't be conveyed and no one's gonna get a building permit for it. So-
I didn't, through you, Jerry. That's not what I asked, Ben. Because there's a reason that you're pushing so hard for this. You're afraid of something in the zoning world. So even if you don't do anything with it, it gives you three years to decide what you want to do with it. So my question is, if town council comes back and says that it didn't meet the A and R because the road wasn't there, where does the Town of Walthley stand in this at that point? where does the town of Wallfleet stand in this at that point?
That's a question, that's a question for town council, number one. I don't think I want to ask Ben that question because he's representing the applicant, but number-
I don't, Jerry, I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. Yeah, I think it's a question that we, we need to ask council on, but again, Alfred and board members.
Jerry, I'm done.
They may get the protection as a single lot or three lots. They would only get it as two probably. However, I'm going to put this as simple as I can. We still have the hammer. They've got to come back to the planning board. They, I know all the individuals well enough to know they do not want to get into a major battle with the planning board on a subdivision that is totally under covenant that we're in control of. So I think that we as a planning board and the town of Wallfleet is protected. There's nothing we can really do about the zoning aspect of it without clarity and we don't have the time under no approval not required plan.
I'm going to disagree with you for one statement, Jerry.
Okay.
If they come back and do two new lots under an A and R and only use Route 6 for it, they don't even have to talk to us.
And they know that.
Absolutely.
Well, okay.
So Jerry, don't, don't tell us we have a hammer and don't tell us we can tell them what to do.
But what have we lost? If they come back, okay, if they come back with a-
We haven't lost anything. It's just the fact that we, we're using that as a tool to, to not vote for something, that that tool may not be there. That's all.
Jerry, if I could respond to that, if, if the applicant comes back and goes a two lot A and R on Route 6, why does the planning board care what road is in there? It's just a driveway then.
Oh, I don't, I don't think at that point, Ben. It's got nothing to do with me. Because at that point, I believe you met all the requirements.
Right.
That's all. I have not, but I, but I'm not gonna, but I don't believe that. I'm going to quit there. Thank you.
I think at this point, I'm gonna, we've got to move on. I think at this point, the applicant and Ben, you both understand that we're going to let the 21 days expire. You can decide whether or not to, to run it. We are going to turn it over to town council, get some answers. But as chair, I'd love to see if we can, we've got two subdivisions out there pending that have been on the books for six years. I want to clear them up and move on. So anything you and the, your applicant, your, the owner can do to move this thing forward to come to a conclusion as to whether or not we're going to deal with Joseph Way or it becomes a driveway. Let's just keep applications open and move forward and see what we can do. Okay?
Absolutely. Understood.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Approval not- This one should be easier. Approval not required. Chequeston Neck Road, Old Chequeston Neck Road.
It's my time for me to speak. Yeah, thank you. I, I, actually, I get very frustrated when I'm not told that I should be at a meeting and I hear this misinformation being presented to you folks. You have no, no, you don't have any backup from me because I did not approve the road and you were told that. I think that's very not right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I understand Billy and, and the planning board members understand clearly where we were with that road, so.
Okay, all right.
No, you're, you're fine.
Then you, you, well, the planning board understood, but the, the other, the people presenting it didn't understand that.
But there was, there was a misconception that you were involved with the original layout and-
No.
That you were brought in simply to help satisfy the construction of the road, so.
Yeah, but, but, but the construction of the road is not approved and you know that, Jerry.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I hear you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I just jump in? Beth, you gotta stop that, okay? You're, you're a planning board member. You gotta stop that.
I'm telling you how I feel. I can do that, Ben, whether you like it or not.
No, just try to have some grace, please.
All right. All right, let's move on. Billy?
I'm here. I represent, I represent the owners of two lots on Old Chequeston Neck Road, land courted property William H. Wallace and his wife Karen. And this, the plan that you see in front of you is proposing to the original, there's the original Lot 22, Lot 23. They bought Lot 23 and they want to remove the, the common boundary line between, property line between both lots and create Lot 28, which is 50,006 plus or minus square feet. And as, as should be done, I've already taken my plans, the plan that you see has been approved by the land court and then I've come back to you with it, with, this is an approved land court plan. I know it doesn't have anything to do with your approval, but it has to be done through the land court, so I don't get, have to come back to you. That's the procedure. Thank you.
I know I should know. Billy, was this, this was Ed Master? Was this subdivision originally done by Ed Master, these three lots? You know?
This here?
Yeah.
Was it done by who?
Sorrentino.
I don't know.
Developer was?
No.
Okay, because I don't think it was part of, I don't think it was part of Great Pasture. I just want to make that clear.
A part of, of who?
Great Pasture. I'm, I'm Great Pastor behind it. So I just want to make sure.
No, no, this is separate. This was separate. This is a separate, it's a separate land court number.
Good. Thank you.
This is 15209D, Jerry, and the land court, and the back number in the back was 32885. So this is, this was done on, it's, it's the separate properties.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Under the land court. The separate registered properties. Yes, sir.
Yep, okay. So basically, we're taking two 25,000, 24,000, 25,000 square foot lots and making one.
Yes, sir.
All right. Planning board members, any questions?
No, I, I think I'm going to move it that it meets the requirements of an A and R because it's also in a positive direction because we're taking two undersized lots for today's zoning. One could have been built on and we're combining it to the other one. So I deem this meets the requirements of an A and R.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Anyone, any one of the four members opposed to the approval not required plan? Seeing none unanimous. All set.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you very much, folks.
You're welcome.
Welcome. Good evening.
Subdivision of 30 Kincaid- preliminaries, I'm sorry, preliminary subdivision of 30 Kincaid Street owned by James and Kathleen, who is representing-
Hi, I, I am. My name is Jeff Cronin. I'm from Ryder Wilcox Engineering. I am here this evening with, with Jim and Kate and we are here for the pre-submission review of the sketch plan that we provided of the proposed subdivision of 30 Kincaid Street into two lots. It is also a land courted property. I'll let Kate explain to you why they would like to have this land subdivided and then I will, I will explain why we are asking for a couple waivers to be granted by the board. So if Kate, you would like to give them a little-
Sure. Yep, thank you. Thank you for having us tonight and listening to this. We are full-time Wallfleet residents of many years. I'm an educator and a school administrator at Cape Cod Technical High School, from that sentence. My husband Jim is an administrator for the Nauset School District. And our middle child, Lee, is a teacher at Lighthouse Charter School and her fiance is a Dennis police officer. And both of them have long roots and a lot of interest in moving back to when they were younger. They worked here all through college and they would really like to get back to town. However, no matter how they work and save, their ability to enter the market and the way the market's been racing up is constantly out of their range, as well as that they're renting a tiny little house in Dennis. However, their rent plus utilities is actually more in our mortgage than our house and our two plus acres here in Wallfleet. So they're making a little too much money to do anything with affordable housing or any incentives like that. But no matter how they work, they just can't catch on to like an entry level here in Wallfleet. So what we would like to do is break up our two plus acres and we're going to hear a little bit more about that in just a moment and give them an opportunity to be able to build something that they can afford as a starter home here in Wallfleet.
So what we are requesting, the two waivers we are requesting so that we can put the house basically in, in a decent position under Section 4 Design Standards and Required Improvements, Section 4.03 Roads is the right of way width of not less than 40 feet is one we were looking for. And then also Section 4.04 Dead End Streets, a turnaround having an exterior radius of at least 45 feet. And kind of the last waiver was from road construction onto this cul-de-sac turnaround because we just planned to install a single-family driveway to the dwelling and hoping not to have to create a whole new road, but still maintain, you know, all the requirements, especially the frontage requirements to, to have these lots. The reason is, is the lot topography. There's a topographical depression in the southeast corner of the lot. We're trying to avoid having to build in that. And also we want to keep them as far away from the power line easement where, where they are, they are situated on. And I know it's only about 10 or 12 feet that we're asking for and five feet on the radius, but it actually moves the house into a much better location for them. And, and that's what it comes down to is we're just trying to put the house in a decent location for them.
Okay. How many years ago did you come before the planning board from, for some input? Was it four years ago? Three years ago?
Pre-COVID.
Yeah, I know it was pre-COVID, but I think it's at least five, four or five years. So we're, we're familiar, those members that were on the board are, are familiar with the discussion and the suggestions we, we had for you to try and put something like this together. So we are aware of it and I'm, I'm glad you're able to pull off whatever you pulled off and get before the planning board. Why? And I know I should see this, but didn't Kincaid Street have enough frontage for that lot 7A to become buildable?
There, I don't believe there is a 7A. It's, they, they own the entire lot seven. And they have enough frontage on their lot, but they wouldn't if they broke it into two. If they subdivided, they wouldn't have enough frontage. That's why we have to pull to, put a cul-de-sac in to begin with is, is due to the frontage requirements. They obviously have plenty of square foot.
You've got seven, just so I can help me out here, I'm sure a couple other members are. You've got lots 7A and 7B. This, the, the one lot is seven. The division of these two would become 7A.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. That's, that's a proposed, that's a proposed sketch of 7A and 7B.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, sorry.
I know it's been a long night and I think I didn't lose it yet, but, okay.
That's all proposed.
Yes, that's proposed.
So if you see, I'm, we're giving 7A 135 square, I mean, excuse me, 135 foot frontage. Otherwise, you know, they only would have had, they had 40, 115, they had 155 feet of frontage prior to our fun sketch.
What's the, I know I should be able to read this plan better and I'm reading it, but Lot 7. What is the frontage for Lot 7 as it stands right now?
15502.
Okay, gotcha.
I have a question. If you're still, if you're still-
I'm still thinking, Alfred, go.
We got a driveway easement. Is that part of the lot? Is that not part of the lot?
So the driveway easement is, is basically our error at Ryder Wilcox. The driveway easement, it just is their driveway now. We, we noticed after the plan was submitted to you that, that the actual existing driveway easement, see document 599369, eliminated that other easement. So that does not exist. I apologize for that.
So the property line, does that go along the dotted line?
The property line is the 8203. It's the bearing 39558203. It's the property line now.
Okay, so the easement is not part of our discussion in theory.
It is not, no.
Okay, well.
So the easement, to, to go without, the easement, see document 3 599369, will, is that remaining?
Yes.
Okay, and that is the access to Lot 7 house right now, the main house?
Yes, correct.
And that will continue to be the access to that house?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Go ahead. Alfred?
Well, I don't know. I don't know how. I think this is a waste. Not of doing this, but I mean, to, to, to design a cul-de-sac of this size, which is our requirements with a waiver, to get one more lot out of it. I question whether or not, and I don't know if I'm out of line with the rest of the board. And I haven't looked at the topography, so maybe I should be quiet till we go look at it. We have done subdivisions by losing less land than what you have here. My problem with this is you have a lot of land, no, excuse me, you have decent lots. There is no lot of land anymore. A large portion of it's under the power line easement, which is useless except for septic value. Correct me if I'm wrong in any of those statements. But I guess my question, Jerry, is depending on what the board thinks, you know, if they could wrap the cul-de-sac along the other one a little better and pull it back, they may be able to save some more building area.
We, we'd like any, any options that you guys would give us. We, any, anything. We, we'd love to make the cul-de-sac smaller as well.
Is, is time of the- I'll address it to the engineer or I'll address it to, if you don't mind, Jim, Jim and Kathleen. Is time of the essence in this matter imperative?
A lot of time, a lot of years have gone by so far. What, what do you, I don't know how-
What I'm asking is, Alfred, I was thinking about the same thing you were thinking.
I mean, if, if we could get a driveway of some sort with a K-turn in it.
Yeah, but how about, how about this? Didn't, the cluster by law that we passed, wasn't it 60,000 square, square feet or more?
Yes.
All right.
It's possible.
They've got 88,000 square feet. They've got eighty eight thousand square feet. So if, if they're showing as they are right now, a preliminary plan. And we could easily, we could easily say, listen, redraw this and put the five feet back. So it is, it meets no
No way.
And they file under some attorney would say I shouldn't be saying this, but I'm just, you know, it's
If you don't, I will.
I know. I- i- if you file under that cluster by law. You could, you've proved to the planning board, if this cul-de-sac is redrawn five feet larger. Then you can divide this property into two lots. That's all that we require. Oh, you gotta pull in the affordability.
No, that's on the fifty, that's that's on on fifty.
Yeah, let me review it, but um we can, we can waive cul-de-sac with number one. To Alfred's point. If you were to pull have you determined where the driveway to seven B is going to be?
Uh, it'd probably go right through where we have the cul-de-sac uh, drawn in right there in in that area. The house, the house, you know, we we had designed the house to be thirty feet off. You know, because of the setbacks at the front. So it it would go in that area and we'd probably have it come in and turn off just before the curve starts.
So are you thinking, you thinking up, um, I'm looking at this and somewhere around that twenty foot contour line right in the middle? That seems to be a flat area and you're going up twenty
No, we we actually kind of want it more between where the twenty five is in that it's more of a flat region in there. They want it closer, kind of closer to their house as well because it it does drop off real good. But it, you you're correct, it is in between that twenty to thirty area. That would be best suited.
So could you since you own, since it appears that you own all the way down to the line uh, south seventy four degrees, forty five, fifty three?
Yes.
Okay, if you were to pull off a cul-de-sac right there.
I'm just trying to think of how we could make the frontage work. Um, and then you mean have the driveway come off of that cul-de-sac and
No, 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 no. What I'm suggesting is what we do, and this goes to Alfred's point. And Alfred could finish it, but on something of this nature, we waive the, we we normally would waive the construction of the cul-de-sac. We would waive so long as you got a driveway in there and the driveway all the way to the main house right now is long enough where, you know, uh a fire truck gets in. I'm just wondering if you pulled that cul-de-sac all the way back to the south southern corner, even though it's, it's a, an area that you wouldn't want to build it, but it shows on paper. And then you put your driveway right where you're gonna normally put it, but that creates your, wouldn't that create your frontage? Down in
I I I'm certainly willing to try any, I'm certainly willing to try a number of designs and and come back to you guys and you know, see if we can, however we could make it work.
Okay, let me see if I can approach the board this way. Planning board members. Based on the fact that you're only going to get one additional house lot on this property. They have the area. We normally would waive cul-de-sac construction. Require probably underground utilities. Would would planning board members feel okay with dropping that cul-de-sac all the way back down to the south and not have it constructed at all? And it's just li- literally a a paper, paper cul-de-sac that never gets done?
Absolutely.
That was Beth, I think, right?
Yes.
Okay, Olga, how are you feeling on that?
Seems okay to me.
Alfred?
Uh, I I'm fine with that because, but I I I wonder if we can we're not supposed to design these, but in theory.
No.
We're looking for, we're looking for
Wide open door there, come on.
Um. Well. We can waive, we waive roads and cul-de-sacks to where they started twenty feet wide in the past. But as I said, I'd like to look at this first. But if we took the, if the cul-de-sac came back to us at where the R forty is on the, on the original cul-de-sac.
Yep.
And that was only twenty feet wide there. And it went up from there and made a tight cul-de-sac, right? You'd be gaining the whole side of that where you'd be coming out of that hole a little better. Um. You know, you know what I might do? I might take the time, if I was the applicant, to put one, two, three, maybe four stakes in where we could actually have a site inspection. If they wanted to go that expense. And at that point, I think that I believe you, my opinion is we could waive half of this cul-de-sac because we're only building one lot. And the lot, even though it's, it's deceiving, because the lot really isn't four, four thousand square feet, because a third of it is under the power lines. So these lots are not as big as we're showing them. So it's not as if these are gonna have lots of structures on them, in my opinion. I mean, Christ, I could be wrong.
Oh, I'm just, just to mention, one reason we put the cul-de-sac where we were is because if you put the cul-de-sac a little lower with the thirty foot setback off the front, it it kind of went into that flat area that we were looking to put the house. So by putting the cul-de-sac up higher. It could be put back down to the southeast of it. That's just why we tried that first. So we we'd love the opportunity to try anything you guys suggest.
Well, my suggestion is if you started at the twenty forty eight.
Yep.
The cul-de-sac went approximate parallel to the line that you've already drawn. Because you've got excess frontage here. If you come up to the twenty forty eight and then you went from there up to the twenty three eighty nine.
Yep.
And kind of, because at that point, you're probably gonna almost pick up enough frontage on the existing road.
We can, we we can pick up, we can get the frontage, absolutely. I I just worry about putting the large, the forty foot circle with the thirty foot.
I never, I never, I never said that. I never said the point. I mean, even if you get stuck with a forty foot circle. The fact that if you cut the side off of this thing and then you keep the circle or you even downsize it more.
Okay.
If we, if we, if the board decides to waive the construction of it, the circle is only gonna create the the frontage. So technically the circle only needs to be, to be big enough to create the frontage.
Okay, sounds great.
I mean, I'm not saying it's gonna pass. That's not this discussion. But I think if I um was a betting person and wanted to buy a lottery ticket, that might be the way to go.
We we can draw up a, we can draw up a few options and 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 see what works best.
I I think, I think the signal is, is going in the direction that the board members understand the situation.
Thank you.
Want to work with the clients. At the same time, taking into consideration the town of Wellfleet. But basically say to you, the engineer, take off the handcuffs. Use your imagination.
Excellent.
You know, this is, this is a dr- this basically is, is one lot. The fire trucks aren't gonna need to turn around on the cul-de-sac. We can waive cul-de-sac dimensions. We can waive width of width of road. We don't want to make it a practice, but you know, we also don't want to ruin the environment and and everything else for a single house lot. That really can't, can't be expanded. My thought originally was, okay, do that cluster and you're all set. You wipe out the cul-de-sac and the road, but I forgot you gotta, you gotta add a at least a one bedroom affordable unit in there as well, which you got the land for and you got the septic, but I'm not too sure you want to go there. Um, that would eliminate the road totally, but
Gerald.
Yeah.
What does adding an affordable unit do for us? Because uh
Well, what, what we have
We don't have an affordable unit, Jerry.
What?
We don't have an affordable unit anymore.
Yes, we do. What we have is um we have the ability that if you have, since you was, since you came in and saw us last. That's why I was wondering how many years, years ago it was. Okay, since you were in before the board. After you were in, so before you were in, the board has now passed a cluster by law and reduced the size to sixty thousand square feet. What you have to determine with that sixty thousand square feet is how many lots by right that you can get out of that cluster development. In this case, you would, you've taken the first step. You have presented a preliminary plan showing that by right, you can get two lots. You're living on one and you have a second. You then can go back and redesign a cluster development where you can reduce lot sizes to ten thousand square feet. You can have a little bit of open space, which could be the power line. You pull out the cul-de-sac and the road. It's not considered any part of the lot coverage anymore. You don't have to construct it. But what you have to do is create at least a one bedroom affordable unit to be sold. So you would have to add another dwelling unit. Could be a one bedroom, it could be on ten thousand square feet, but you would eliminate that road completely. And all of that. That is just, I'm throwing that out to you and to your engineer to say, okay, again, the handcuffs are off. Here's what we have in our zoning by law. If it interests you, fine. You've already taken the first step with a preliminary plan. If that is of no interest to you, then the board is also saying, listen, bring us a couple of plans. Good ideas, get a good building lot out of it, and let's see what both of us can do in a timely manner to solve your problems and our problems and get this thing moving.
Well, thank you. Those are excellent suggestions to think about. I, off the top of my head, I don't think we would go the route you just described. But we might, because we have a disabled son who lives with us and he always will. Um, and he would like his own privacy. He's twenty eight. Um, and someday Emily and Brian are gonna take care of him as we get too old. We were thinking of, because the way the slope goes making a small studio apartment for him with his own exit, so that he could have a sense of independence.
Well, what you could, what you could do, probably and you want to take this into consideration is you could probably build him a one bedroom.
An ADU?
Probably build him over six, I think it's, you can build five, six hundred square feet. You can create a five thousand square foot lot, you can create a ten thousand square foot lot. You've got the septic. You could have that. You could sell it to him in a trust. Um, you could even keep it as a rental and do it as affordable and he qualifies. It might satisfy your plans down the line, um, but it's just food for thought. So think about it. And if you have, if you have a question as engineer, certainly look in the zoning bylaws. If you, if you can't find it. Give Karen the secretary and she'll get a copy out to you because I'm not sure it's in there, but it should be.
Okay, we will look into that.
It's something you might, you know, in the future, want to look at just to cover your bases.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We'll leave it with that. We're not, I I don't think the board's giving you preliminary approval at this point because I think we want to continue discussing it and see what, what we can come up with and and solve the problems.
Okay, we can do that. That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Stay well.
Way name change. From this is on, I should know it. It's um Josh.
In the woods, it's in the woods, Jerry.
Yeah, I know it is. Josh, you still, yeah, Josh is still there.
Good evening.
Good evening. Josh, you want to make a presentation?
I'll keep it very brief.
Thank you, Josh.
Absolutely. Uh, when, when, when naming the ways in Wellfleet, uh, we may have missed one. And it is a way that I thought was my driveway for a very long time until the park told me it wasn't. And we figured a way should have a name. And so I've gone through the process as outlined by your bylaws to get this way named. And uh, if I could be so bold, we would like to name it Yesden Way because there's been a wooden sign that says Yesden for the last fifty years or so. So we figured in the sake of conservation, let's leave everything as is.
Okay. Um, planning board members, any input?
I'd like to know why it doesn't go all the way to the bottom. It's only marked off halfway.
You mean the whole way?
I'm sorry, I don't need to be laugh, I'm sorry.
Jerry, be good.
I'm gonna try and be good here, Alfred.
That way goes from
Oh yeah, I'm, why? Do you want to, um, do you want to admit to the fact of how many times you've driven down that area that doesn't show on the plan or does show on the plan?
I'm confused.
Yeah, you're confused, all right.
I I have a problem naming half of the way. I don't have a problem if the people have closed half of the road off, but I think that the road should be named the whole, the whole way. We shouldn't be naming half of it and leaving the other half in limbo land. Because I I'm looking at a map that shows lot twenty two with a way that goes around lot twenty two. And the way goes by lot twenty, which is probably vacant as I recall.
Yes.
Um, but that's not the point. I mean, if we're gonna name a way, I don't think I've ever named in the thirty two years I've been here. Only half a road.
Josh, you want to weigh in on that? Or you want me to?
Uh, I defer to you, Chair.
Um. Alfred, I think what, what this is going back to your history, Alfred. You know, it's a little bit before my time. When, when Charlie laid this out. Charlie Frazier laid this out, I'm assuming.
Possibly.
That, all of that was going to go right through and be developed. But stopped because of the national seashore coming in. So at this point because years and years ago, I did used to rent Josh's parents' house. Um, on occasion. To my knowledge, that way ending where his driveway and they come in and go back up to the house, really kind of ends at that point. And we've cut off the other, the other end. The seashore has weighed in, and I think you guys have seen the letter, that they basically don't say anything, they don't object to name changes.
But they're also not, they're also not stating only for half a road.
Right, they didn't. So in, we could say that to rename the way from Griffin Island Road to the intersection um at the Y. But it seems that both of those forty foot laid out ways are named ways. are named ways. So how would you do it, Alfred?
Well, I believe Yeston Way, because I don't have a problem with the name because it meets the requirements. Yeston Way would follow all the way down to where the other way is, even if it's not used. Because other than that, we're only naming half a road. And in my opinion, we're stating the other half doesn't exist. And I don't believe that's in our preview under the application.
So we could say, yes.
So, so just, just to clarify, the, the extent to which this way goes um, is, I guess, unknown to, to, to my family at least. As far as we're concerned, it goes all the way to Duck Harbor Road. Um, the highlighted portion in your packet was just me identifying the way we were speaking of because there were just no names to point to.
Well, I, I would move, then we could discuss it. I would move that we go from Griffin Island Road to Duck Harbor Way, because that's what that is, I believe. Um, from point A to point B, I would call that Yeston Way. And whether or not you travel the whole thing, that doesn't make any difference to me. Because that way there, when you look in the atlas at the fire department, it's going to show that that yellow line that you've drawn goes all the way down to the, the Y. And that way there, there's no discussion of what the bottom was because the road originally was called something different. Correct? Am I still here?
Yeah, you're still there. You're saying you're getting from Griffin Island Road down to Duck?
Duck Harbor.
Which road doesn't exist and is closed.
Well, it's not necessarily closed, Jerry, because who closed it?
True.
I don't want to be the one to say it's closed by not doing it. I'm not saying it's opened either. I just think that if we're going to rename a road, it's kind of very, it's never been presented to me to only do half.
I, I totally agree. I mean, I get, and I don't think there's any objection because there's nobody there. So the way from, uh, Griffin Island Road to Duck Harbor Road be renamed to Yeston Road doesn't, that's consistent.
It's, it's not going to, it's not going to open that road up. It's just going to state where.
Nope.
Because other than that, we're leaving it a half, half a way and half a road.
Yes. Yep. I, I don't have any problem with it. You don't have any problem with it?
I don't have a problem with it.
To the applicant.
Do you, um, Josh, do you have any problem with it?
None at all.
All right. Any, um, Alfred, you want to make a motion? So we can get some other members if they want to jump in?
Well, why don't we let somebody else tonight?
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we, um, approve the request to rename the way Yeston Way. Um.
Yeston Way?
Just Yeston Way, the entire way.
From Griffin Island Road to Duck Harbor?
Griffin Island Road to the harbor.
Okay. Any second?
I'll second it.
I'll go second it. Any discussion? Seeing none. Anyone opposed? None? Unanimous? Road changed from Griffin Island Road to Duck Harbor Road to, from Way to Yeston Way. Is it Yeston Way or Yeston Road? Yeston Way.
Yes, the request was Yeston Way.
You got it. Yeston Way. Unanimous. Okay? Josh, who else up?
Very much appreciated. Thank you to everyone. I will, uh, bring the check next week.
The accounting in Wellfleet, we'll be looking forward to it.
Very well, very well. Um, please, please don't go back in person. I really enjoy joining these Zooms.
I, I think the discussion, Josh, was, at one point, you may have, I, I may be repeating myself. One of the problems was that the powers that be are of the same mind you are. There was some equipment that needed to be added so we could do in-person meetings as well as Zoom. And we didn't have the proper equipment. And maybe they're moving forward until we get our accounting straightened away, but at least get to that point. But their ultimate decision was trying to get a uniform meeting where we would, we could do, meet in person and allow uh, Zoom meetings at the same time. So that's where we were going in the future, I guess.
Got it. Well, anyways, I really appreciate it, everyone. Thank you so much. This means a lot to, uh, my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. All right, um. What else was on that agenda?
We got minutes?
Yep.
Yes.
We had. Uh, way name change, definition of documents, planning board.
I always thought that was the name of that road.
Well, now it is.
All right, distribution of documents. Um, we have brought up a number of times that documents be, and I wanted to clarify it, so that's why it's on the minutes. Um, we had discussions and I've made the decision um, in the past and consistent with the future that, that the packets and emails are the two means of distribution of information to planning board members. And I see no reason why to change that, to continue it. And if we're going, in fact, that soon in June to, um, full meetings, all the more reason that most of the time those packets, if not all the time, need to be picked up. And most of the time, we will be back into, um, open sessions and no need for anything else. So, um, I'm just letting, letting everyone know that it's been documented. There's the dates, we discussed it. And I'm leaving it as is. So, um, email and pickup will be the two means of material for the planning board members. So, um, minutes. Which ones do we want to take?
Jerry, as you know, I put in writing some corrections that I thought needed to be made rather than read them aloud. But do with them as you wish.
Well, they came in too late, so they, they were not in the packet. It shouldn't be in the packet. They got to be in by Thursday. Um, so.
But I only got, they were in the packet. So that's when I responded to them, right? And you had said, put these things in writing. So that's what I did.
Right. So. Gary?
Yes, Jerry.
Yeah, were there any, did you read those changes?
I got them.
We have to, hey, hear the.
You have to vote. They have to be voted on on the floor. I can't change the minutes once I've submitted them.
She can't do that. It's open meeting law.
Yes.
We have to.
I'm not breaking the law.
I'm not trying to. We are going over the minutes.
Whatever. Whatever.
No, what we're doing is, is, is the changes on the meeting of February sixteen?
They've already been amended twice.
On February sixteen?
Yes, Jerry.
Okay. So these have been amended. Is there any motion to accept as printed?
I had some.
These have been amended as we've been issued them? Or they've been amended? How, who, how are they amended?
Yeah.
After them, they vote on the meeting, I make the changes and then I resubmit them for the following meeting. And then they don't like them and they ask for more changes. So I've made the changes twice and now we're resubmitting them again.
So Jerry, that's not.
That's not right.
Okay. It's not okay.
No.
When we review the meetings, minutes.
Yes.
We, we propose changes, we vote on that, and then it's done. And then we vote to accept the minutes as amended. They don't have to come back. It's a done deal. Karen doesn't have to keep doing this over and over. It's one time.
Well, they weren't, they were never approved, Beth, so.
They need to be approved as amended. At the meeting. You can't amend privately. You can only amend minutes when the membership can vote on them.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, that's, that's what they were done. They were amended. I think, Beth, they were amended.
Then they're accepted. We vote to accept as amended.
They're voting now.
No.
No, you vote at the time. They don't come back.
But they didn't.
Okay.
But they.
I just would like to express that there's some.
Oh, my God.
That six-point-two is not home occupation. It's six-point-two-two. Six-point-two-three, six-point-two-point-three is not service trade home. It's six-point-two-three. There, there were some.
Those changes weren't given, those were never talked about.
No, I'm putting them, I'm making them now. If you don't want to.
Wow, great. Oh, one.
That's okay.
It's from February? You had plenty of opportunity to make those changes prior to this month. We've been looking at February's since March.
I think we said we do the minutes later at the next meeting. I'm, I'm sorry, it's, if you don't want to deal with a correction, then I'm completely out of turn.
But that's not the point, that's not the point. The point is the minutes are presented to the board. We review the minutes. We correct the minutes. And then we vote to accept the minutes as amended. And that's the end of it. It doesn't come back again.
To approve them, whether they're right or wrong. That's what you're saying.
No, we, we review them after they're presented to us.
I had, I thought.
At the next meeting, right? So we meet, the minutes come back to us, we review them, we make changes. And someone makes a motion, this is how it should be. I'm not saying this is how it was done, but this is how it should be. Someone makes a motion to accept the minutes as amended. We vote on that. And that's the end of those minutes.
Unless there's some discussion.
No, once they're accepted, they're done.
They're accepted when they're voted on.
Well, I said they were voted on as amended. And that's the end of it.
They were amended.
Now, please.
They were amended originally. She didn't need to send them back. They were amended. We voted to amend and make the motion, the motion was made to amend, I believe, and that was it.
And that's it.
I would have to go back and listen. But for instance, we said we would put down all the public documents or she calls them public documents. There was missing the letter from Patty Lemmy, so I added that. Is that wrong? Excuse me?
A letter from somebody to the board shouldn't, it may be.
Yes, it is listed.
A letter, but the letter should not be part of our minutes.
It is not. It is listed, but it is not listed in this minutes as amended. That she amended all the documents, but she left out this one. So I added it. And I put it in writing so I wouldn't have to do this, this way. Obviously, you didn't get it in writing, but Jerry had asked that I do it in writing. So I did it in writing. If you want to ignore it, go ahead.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying, Olga, is once the board votes to accept minutes, then they can't be changed anymore.
Okay, your rule. Once we vote, we did not vote on them yet. And we could vote against them. No, we voted to have it amended, say, that all the list, we would list the documents. This is just an example. One of the documents is missing, I noticed. So I asked that it be added. Now what?
I don't know, you know, minutes, if you, if you go, if you go to, i- i- if you research what minutes are supposed to be.
I have done that.
It's a very simple thing. You take the agenda and you record votes, motions, seconds and votes. That's it. Based on the agenda. It's not a, a five-page document. It's not supposed to replace being at the meeting.
Beth, she has incorrectly given numbers for zoning bylaw references. I made the correction.
At the meeting?
I didn't, I don't think I had it at that point.
Well, but that's my point. If we accept.
So we are about to vote on whether to accept them. And I am saying that there are some corrections that need to be made. If you want to ignore it, fine, it's on the record. I sent these, this correction in writing to Karen and Jerry. They can do with it whatever they want. If you think the rule is, you just accept them because we told you what we needed.
I'm asking, did we not vote to accept the minutes?
I don't believe it.
And now they're back again.
And we were waiting till the next meeting, but I'd have to go back and listen.
Yeah, I don't know that either, but.
I don't see that it said we agreed that the minutes were, um.
Once we vote on them, they're done.
We haven't voted on them yet. Okay? They have been amended and now we're going to vote on them. And I'm saying there's some corrections to be made. Now, I don't know what the problem is. Jerry, would you like to speak to this? I, I don't care.
Was, Karen, was there a vote on the minutes of February sixteen?
No, there was not. I have been asked to make changes twice. There was plenty of opportunity to make the changes she's now making. So I've made changes twice.
I don't care how many times, frankly.
Oh, Olga, you've seen February sixteenth more than once. You've seen them since March. You've had plenty of opportunity to make changes. Done. No more comments. I'm tired of.
Okay.
What, what I'm suggesting, Jerry, is that the minutes have too much information in them and you can go on with this forever. If we just have in the minutes the agenda item and emotions made and the votes taken, that's all minutes need to be. They are not supposed to be verbatim discussions in print. Because when you do that, inevitably, you have too much opportunity for mistakes and misinterpretations. And I didn't mean that. What I meant was this and yada, yada, yada. Get rid of all of that and minutes can be simple.
I, and I understand that, Beth. Um, we, we swing back and forth. We get it down to where it should be and then all of a sudden they start expanding again. The point, the point on this is, at this particular point, is there, there was no vote taken on the meet, meeting minutes of February sixteen.
Then let's do it tonight.
Right. So, based on February sixteenth, the minutes before you, is there a change? Does anybody have a change on the minutes of February sixteen?
I, I gave, I gave you a copy, Jerry, by email. If you, I, I If you, I, I'm happy to go through it orally.
What were the changes?
You have to go through it orally. We, the board members have to hear it, so we can vote on it.
I understand that.
Okay.
But Jerry had asked that this be put in writing at some point, so I put it in writing.
Right. What were the changes?
Well, on February 16th, and maybe you just want to throw out, well, you've already written it, basically, the word "service trade business" is actually "service trade home business."
Well, service, okay, that's-
And-
It's fine as is. Go ahead.
Okay. And then there's service trade, which I think was meant to be home occupation. I'm just, I just, it is very confusing. Most important is 6.2 is not home occupation. It's 6.22. And 6.2.3, service trade, blah, 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 is actually 6.23. Not, not those extra points in there. And I, what was added was a list of the public documents, and there was missing from that list a letter from Patty Lemme, so I added it.
Where, I need a change of, of that.
Alfred, go ahead.
I'm gonna stop right there. Who, you, who added a list to these, these minutes were changed? I have a question. These minutes were changed after the secretary created them, because you issued stuff that you wanted changed in them. Is that correct?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, through Jerry.
Um, it is an open meeting law, law, in the open meeting law, you're supposed to list the documents that are part of the meeting. And that had been done, and it had been done before, but-
That wasn't my, that wasn't my question, Olga. Through, through Jerry, through you.
Yep.
Have you, have you turned in documents to the secretary that you want put in the, in the minutes?
After I read them, I did by email. I marked up and gave her, you know, some of my comments. And Cece, Jerry.
Now, are those comments in here now?
This was after I received the packet and went through them.
Your comments haven't been actually printed.
The document list-
Not to anyone, no.
The document list is on it.
And one thing was missing. That's all I said. You wanted to-
I have never seen a doc, I've been doing this 30 years. I've never seen a document list on, on minutes.
Well, it's in the open meeting law.
Well, I'm not sure.
And we had been doing it before, and for some reason, we stopped.
Okay.
And that's February 16th.
It has to be, what, to my knowledge, what has to be put on, on the open meeting law, under documents, is documents that are received, not letters and not all the mail. Patty's Lemme came in as mail only. It was not a discussed item. It was none of our business. It was simply a dis, a piece of mail that was sent in, and I don't believe that has to go on under open meeting law.
Definitely not.
Okay, but we also said we would put correspondence on, from now on, on our agenda, and I guess we have, if I'm not mistaken.
I think the correspondence is relative to what we're discussing in the meeting. Not every single piece of, um, of material that comes in as information. That, to my knowledge, does not have to be on it.
All right, I didn't know.
Okay. I will go over, if I need to, I will correct. But I don't think it needs to be done at this moment in time. I think February 16th can be voted on if there's no other changes. I'll look to it, but you have to have a clear head to look at it, to find out the whole meeting of what you're referring to in 6.2, 6.23, and I'm not even sure any of that even needs to be in there.
That's right. And likewise, a lot of my report is in there. I didn't, it could have said Olga gave a report, but since it said 120% is the income level, but I said 80 and below, I corrected it. Sorry.
That's why I'm saying all those details should not be-
I didn't put them in, okay?
I'm just generally speaking.
The minutes, as I received them.
Okay, we're on the 16th at this point, right?
All right, I, I vote to, to accept the minutes of February 16th.
As printed.
I move to accept the minutes of February 16th.
Okay. Any second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor? All right, discussion? Seeing none. Anyone opposed to the minutes of the 16th?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. 3-1, approved.
3-0-1.
3-0-1. Um, March?
3-1-0.
March 2nd. 3 in favor, 0 against, 1 abstention. March 2nd.
March 2nd.
Wednesday, March 2nd. Minutes?
Do we have those minutes? Blah, blah, blah.
They're, they're here in the-
Yes, they're in the packet.
Okay. So, they're, I approve those minutes. I mo, make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Anyone opposed? All those in favor? Unanimous. March 2nd approved, as printed. So, Karen, those were the only two minutes outstanding?
No, April 20th.
That's what I'm missing. Okay. April 20th?
Yeah.
I got them. Yep, I got it. All right, April 20th. Any discussion on minutes of April 20th?
I sent in some comments. One of them is, it's the Province Town Independent, not Providence. And about in the middle of the page, there's the one word "bylaw," and I think what was meant was "by law," what percentage needs to be in the upland. I think that was what was intended. And then there were some comments to my report that, some wrong information, and the developer wasn't even, um, added in there, just the developer. Um, I didn't ask that there be, you know, two paragraphs on that, but I made those corrections.
All right. Uh, Report of 95 Project, um, you made corrections?
Ba, based on, if you're gonna write a lengthy thing, which I, you know, we know Beth doesn't want that. It could have said, "Report was made on 95 Lawrence Road Project," but since, um, the wrong, um-
I'm, I'm gonna-
... and so forth.
Okay, I'm gonna end it at that point, and I agree with Beth. Um, Karen, I'm gonna make a motion, quite frankly, you just take the bullet, Report of 95 Lawrence Road, Olga, Planning Board Liaison to 95 Lawrence Road, take out the next paragraph completely. Just take it out. Doesn't need to be there. We've got it, we've got it in writing. It was a report that was made. That way, no corrections have to be made. We're not going back to dotting i's and crossing t's. It was done. Other than that, any changes or deletions? Any motions?
I move the, um, minutes as amended.
Changing, uh, Providence to Province Town Independent and, uh, striking out that paragraph.
Losing, losing the paragraph under.
Okay. Any second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I have, I have to abstain.
No, you're abstaining, Beth, because you weren't there. All right, in 3-0, unanimous. Okay. That's the minutes. Um, all right, I will get a letter out, short and sweet, to the Board of Selectmen, asking when, or if a policy has been established, as to when we will go to public meetings again. That would be number one.
June, uh, Jerry, I talked to Rebecca, they, they, I talked to Rebecca, they didn't have a public meeting. That was just the TA having a special meeting, and the Select Board will have a in-person meeting beginning of June. They're gonna have the equipment in at the end of May, and then they'll start with in-person meetings in June.
Okay, so, uh, May.
Thank you, Karen.
All right, so our net, one of our first meetings, if I get that correct, Karen, our first meeting in June is, happens to be June 1st, which I was going to move anyway, because I got a shearing on the 3rd, and I can't do it. So, if we move it to the 7th, or to the 8th, we might have a chance to have an, uh, our first public meeting at the Senior Center, but we should know well in advance of that. So, I'll keep you posted. I won't have to write the letter then. I'll keep all the members posted as to how that goes, but at this present time, the next, the first meeting in June will be the 8th. And let's hope we can go to public meetings. Um, I will also notify, I'm gonna notify TA to see if I can get authorization to get ahold of Town Council to discuss the Approval Not Required Plan. I will tell the members, or I'll let the members know, I may have a problem with it until after the town meeting, because I have no idea whether we've got any money in there at this point to even discuss anything with Town Council, after what they've spent for the warrant and everything else. But if we can squeeze it on there, I'll get it out as soon as possible.
Jerry, I think it's important that we give her the case history, because that will make it much more simple. If we show how the subdivision was done, where it was left.
Yep.
Because that's what I'm basing my opinion on. To ask her a question, I don't think is relative, to me anyways. I don't know where the board feels, but I want to know when that road becomes a road valued for an A&R. And that case is gonna show that they applied for, uh, preliminary subdivision plan. They're gonna show all the things that we can do very quickly. So, they're gonna have the information that I was basing my opinion on, and she can say whether or not that road is complete or incomplete. That's basically what the question, my question is.
Okay, so I'm gonna do two, I'm gonna ask you this question, Alfred. Do you want, want to rely on me to, to hit all of those bullets, or do you want to write up something real simple, one line, as many bullets as you want me to do, touch base with Town Council?
I think, I think maybe if we sit, if the two of us go into the office for a few minutes, open the file, the file folder up.
Yep.
The bullets will come out on July 3rd, September 14th. The, the Planning Board accepted.
Yes. All right, let's do that.
The plan was approved.
Okay.
The plan got waylaid. We're not even gonna say that. On the next date, something happens. I, I don't, I don't want our opinion in it at all, Jerry.
Yes.
Just the facts, the sequence.
Yes, all I wanted, the sequence from when we first were asked to look at a preliminary plan for that subdivision. Till today, I think they can all be one-liners.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking too, yes. Keep it simple.
No, I'm not willing to, I'm not, I don't want to write a story.
Yes, okay. All right, we'll catch up. I'll, I'll hit Town Council first to find out if he's gonna let us get to Town, I'm gonna hit TA first to find out whether or not he's gonna let us to get to Town Council before the annual town meeting or after. Um, because I don't, I really do not know how much money is in the kitty, and how much they want to build up before Town Council.
You think they do?
At the meeting. Huh?
You think they do?
No, they probably don't, but the budget's good till, till June 30th. Whatever there is, it's good till June 30th.
Good thing none of us ever ran a business like this.
All I know is I had, at one point, I had to plead to get the second advertising in on a zoning, on the contractor's yard, because they didn't know where they were gonna find the money for the second, second advertising. I finally got it, and we got the, um, ADU stuff, but it's like, it's, it's that tight. It's, it's that crazy.
We don't have a budget for that anymore?
Alfred, I don't even, I'll be honest with you, I don't even know what the budget is at this point, because it was like-
I know.
I, I, our planning board budget was cut to shreds. Everything was. So, um-
I mean, we're big spenders.
There will be two budgets on the annual town meeting. There will be one budget, A, which will be the budget with a half a million override. There will be budget B, that if the override passes on town meeting floor, but doesn't pass the vote, to take a vote on the half a million dollars, and what will be cut? For example, salaries, wages, employees, and working expenses for committees. So, there will be two budgets on the agenda, on the town warrant, approximately a half a million dollar difference between the two. So, it will be interesting, to say the least. Other than that, thank you all, and, um, I'll see you on the 18th.
Yes.
Good night, all.
Beth, thanks for diving in.
Good night.
Good night.